Good afternoon and welcome to the March 13 Oklahoma City Planning Commission meeting. If you have pagers, cell phones, or similar devices, if you would either turn those off or silence them now, we would appreciate it. If you are not the applicant and you are here to talk to us about a case today, there are signup sheets like these are on the table right outside the chambers, and if you would give them to our staff, we'd be happy to hear you when we hear the case. And with that, we'll go to approval of the February 27 minutes. Move approval? We have a motion and second to approve the minutes. Cast your votes. Oh, we need some lights. Everyone's here. I wasn't here. Okay. Minutes are approved. Thank you.
On continuance requests, we have one uncontested continuance request, item B-19 for PUD 1523 to defer to April 24.
Anyone come here today to talk to us about the application by Braxton Development? Item 19 on our agenda.
Move the uncontested continuum.
We have a motion and second to approve the continuance. Cast your votes. And that's approved. Mike, you're voting. Thank you.
Okay, we have seven new continuance requests. I'm going to read them off. Item V6, which is C-6566, defer to March 27. V7, PC-10363, defer to April 10. Item 9, PC-10364, also defer to April 10. Item 10, SPOD-752, defer to April 10. Item 16, C-6493, defer to April 10. Item 17, C-6566, defer indefinitely. And item 18, which is PUD 1515, defer to March 27.
Again, anyone here today who came to talk to us about any of the items just read, item 6, 7, 9, 10, 16, 17, or 18 on our agenda?
Move the new request.
We have a motion and second to approve the additional continuances. Cast your votes. And those are approved. Are there any continuance requests from the public today? Okay, we'll go to the consent docket.
There's two consent items. Item 1 is C-6577, the final plat of Winds West 6, located north of Southwest 64th and east of County Line Road. And item 2, which is CE-876 by Bellafire Properties, to close the right-of-way in street in Utility Eastmans on Southeast 38th Street, located west of South Missouri.
Similar question again. Anyone interested in items 1 or 2 on our agenda today?
Move approval of the items on the consent docket.
Okay, we have a motion and second to approve the consent docket. Cast your votes. And that's approved.
Under items requiring separate vote, item 3 is for PUD 1521 by WP Land LLC to rezone 14618 North Council Road from the AA zoning district to PUD 1521.
Good afternoon. David Box, 522 Concord Drive, here on behalf of the applicant. Also with me is Kendall Dillon and the applicant Anthony Mersai. The PUD before you is a mixed-use PUD that will allow for some single-family residential development as well as some commercial development. This is a PUD that has gone through many modifications and alterations, and what we believe now is there is a PUD that is appropriately tailored. It's one that is consistent with a comp plan. We believe it's consistent with plating and other development within this sector and within this area of Ward 8. When you look at what we've provided in Track 3, which is the commercial tract, we believe we've provided what this planning commission desires. It's not just a blank box. We actually drew in the potential building sites within that tract. Additionally, we've made some alterations within the PUD so that certain uses are screened from the residential. The convenience store, the drive-through restaurant, any use that we thought might be incompatible, abutting the residential, we made sure that there was at least a 150-foot spacing between that use and the nearest residential, so that the uses closest to the residential would be like the office and the non-intrusive type. This is broken down into two different residential tracks. Track 1 is actually on both sides of that creek, but it will conform with the R1 regulations. Many instances, lots are larger than the R1. Now, Track 2, we are requesting a minimum lot size of 5,000 square feet. The average lot size in Track 2 is 6,700 square feet, so the average lot size is in excess of the standard R1 zoning regulations. But we do want the ability to have some of these smaller lot line lots. That's a market that is extremely viable right now, especially in Ward 8, and we think it's a product that my clients had a lot of success on, and we think that this will be no different. So we would ask that we're able to do 5,000-square-foot lots in Track 2. We think that it's not only in keeping with the area, but it's consistent with the comprehensive plan. So if there are no questions, we would ask for your approval.
Commissioners, Nick?
Mr. Box is correct. They have made numerous changes to the PUD. I've had numerous discussions with the applicant's representatives, have numerous meetings with them. The difficulty I have with this has been from the get-go is the density that's being proposed, and Mr. Box just outlined that some of the lots in Track 2 are 5,000 square feet, but it averages 6,700. I'm not sure how that average works, but I've asked for a limitation on that immediately before the meeting. But what if we limited it to 50% of the lots in Track 2? Well, that's still too dense. We've talked about the commercial on the corner and perhaps having a buffer of offices for that. The best the applicant's willing to do is 150 feet. Well, who wants a drive-in restaurant 150 feet from their bedroom? Despite all the meetings, despite all the attempts of the representatives, the attorneys, engineers, this thing just hasn't gotten to where I think it needs to be. I've reached out to the schools, both the Little Creek School locally, the New Elementary, as well as the administration, have no comment from them. I checked with staff earlier today. Apparently, staff has no comment from schools. Maybe I'm the only one concerned about the density, but this appears to be too dense. It also bothers me that they want to lower the standard to 60% brick. But my primary concern with this is density, and therefore, I'm not favorably inclined to approve.
If I could address the 60% brick, there's a specific product that this developer does, and this issue came up with this developer before this planning commission before, and what we've done is shown you the pictures of what the 60% product is, and you guys approved it. It's a, rather than wood, it's a hardy board. So it's not cheaping on the brick to produce something that isn't going to be a quality development. It's just a specific product that they use with hardy board. But as far as the 150-foot separation, that is consistent with what developers have done all over this city, screening certain uses from residential, is what we did on South Western with the various restaurant tracks, abutting the residential. So we think that gives us an appropriate buffer from the residential. But when you look at the density, our density comes in somewhere around 2.8 to 3, and you can see the plat east of us, it's consistent with what you see that's platted out there in this portion of Ward 8. This is a hot growth area, and we think the density is right in line, and that's why the comprehensive plan would recommend approval.
Well, it isn't just Nick who's apparently concerned about the density.
Yeah, look, this RA section in the middle of this thing just stands in stark relief to 5,000-square-foot lots. I mean, if we had this plat and it came to us with, before, I know there's R1 back to the east, I get it, but as I look at it, it doesn't fit. I know it just doesn't fit, given the, like we said, we've got RA, so those are 1 to 2, 1 to 5 acre lots out here.
The PUD 717?
Yeah.
It is worth noting, we've met with them, and they're not in protest. They're fine with what we've proposed. We've met with them for quite some time on this deal, so it's been an open dialogue with these folks.
Well, be that as it may, it doesn't seem like good planning to me, to be a less-than-5,000-square-foot. Why would we agree to go from AA to sub-R1 standards in one fell swoop, without a logical progression there? It doesn't seem to me to be, like I said, reasonable planning.
Nick?
Well, one comment on density, if you guys will notice the aerial or even on the plat, there's a huge roadway and a lake in there that affects that density calculation.
Well, where there are houses, they're very tightly packed. I get your point, Nick. A significant portion of this tract is used by the common area. Speaking to the common area, I don't see any, what are we getting in the, it may be that we take this up in the next application, but it looks like we've got a big tree-filled space, no amenities or anything like that. Is that in the next part?
The plat, but we've agreed to revise to make sure it's a meaningful common area.
We can take that up then, but...
Wait a minute. This is preliminary plat.
Yeah.
Sorry.
This is the PUD.
Oh, PUD, I'm sorry. You're right.
Yeah, this is the PUD. So that's my feeling on this one.
We certainly recognize that it's odd that we have this chunk in the middle that's already been zoned, but that, those are some significant houses, and they're not going anywhere, so we have to do something around it. And it's not going to stay vacant. The entire core section south of us is going to be, at some point, pay comp. They're expanding. So we think it does provide an appropriate kind of step up and step down and buffering when you look at this area in total.
Just a general comment about density calculations and the way they're figured, and this has been a discussion that's been had before, but we're looking at a substantial amount of this real estate that's undevelopable. And I think density calculations probably should be related to developable land and not, you know, a tract where half of it can't be built on, so we double down on the density and say, well, it's only X. That's an issue for us to take up at another time, maybe in the comp plan, but it's at least something we need to consider. Kendall?
If I may, just a couple of quick points, but in regards to the RA development, again, as David mentioned, we have met with them, and we started early on in process before we even made an application. One of the things that maybe you not see on that map, but we have tried to, as mitigation is abutting up to them, to make those lots deeper. Therefore, I think if you look at it, we do have some that are 125, but we've got the curve on the south. I know at least all of those are 145-feet-deep lots. And if you look at the separation, they're basically 110 to 120 feet, their houses are the back of them away from the property line. So that's going to put us anywhere from 160 to 200 feet of separation between their houses and ours. So that's one of the things in our negotiations with them. Again, we met with them upfront, so those are some of the reasons in what you're seeing in this product, so I sure don't want to leave you with the thought that it hadn't been thought through and worked on. In regards to the density, as David mentioned, we're about 2.86 dwelling units per acre. And I think if you look at what's around, granted, even straight across from the RA zoning there is Stone Manor. It's over 2, but it is larger lots, but nonetheless is R1 single-family. But if you look to the north of it, that you don't see at the northwest corners, Viscaia or however you pronounce it, it's 2.55 dwelling units per acre with an incredible amount of common area in it as well, and then also half-acre to 1-acre tracks on the west end of the 240 acres. So if you look at it, we're very much in line with their density. If you go to the east, obviously, that's Falling Springs, that's 80 acres with 16 acres of common area in it, but yet the density's still 3 and 1/2, so we're considerably less than them. If you go on up Rockwell, north of 150, you've got Deer Springs, you've got Rockwell Park, all of which are over 3 and 1/2. If you go south of 150, you've got Rockwell Village, which is right at 4. And in fact, if you go down to Council and Memorial and look at the Pleasant Grove, you've got 50 acres with 6 acres of common area in it, and that density is over 4 as well. So I think if you look at all those things and combine, as well as in conjunction with the fact that we immediately abut on the south end, it's a PUD, but it's R3M zoning that permits 19 dwelling units per acre. So granted, I understand the concern, but I think if you look at us in conformance with everything that's around us, we have taken some considerations in on trying to work with the folks in the middle. Obviously, that's an oddity as to what we've got, but we think we've got a good plan, and again, we think it's in conformance and consistent, and would ask for your approval.
Further discussion, commissioners? Janice?
I think it's too dense. I mean, I hear what they're saying, that, you know, all you have to do is really look at the area, and it's just too dense. That's all there is to it.
Well, and on that topic, when you look at the area, I'm sure when you drove and looked at this application, you saw all the neighborhoods that were out there that matched this density. And so I think that's an important point, that when you look at the area and you drive and put your boots on the ground, this is what's out there. That's certainly what we saw.
Well, again, what's out there is not a bunch of less-than-6,000-square-foot lots. There are some. What's out there is not a deviation from the standard. Again, I just can't afford it. I'm sorry. I move denial.
Okay, we have a motion and second for denial. Any further discussion? Cast your votes. Nick? It is denied.
We'd ask that the next item be continued for several months to allow us to go through the council process on the PUD.
David, after this is all, it's already passed, what size houses are you going to build on those 5,000-square-foot lots?
Hi, my name is Anthony Mersai, 4704 Windrush, Norman. What we're after is for adult living, mainly 1,600 to 1,700 feet with a small backyard. We can commit to not less than 1,600 feet.
So your house is going to be somewhere around 2,000, 200, 200 feet with garage and porches and everything. You aren't going to have 3,000 feet of yard. And I think that's one of the mistakes that we've made, is that, number one, when you put your sidewalks in and you put your garage in, if you've got a front entrance garage, you can only put two cars in the garage, and most of them are parked over the sidewalks, and they eliminate the use of the sidewalks with those real short front yards.
Well, the code wouldn't allow that. That's, the way that the driveway requirements and the setback lines are, allow a car to park outside of the garage and still allow room for the sidewalk.
I understand that, David, but you know as well as I do that you can't, in those driveways, you can't put four cars in it without two of the cars being in the way of the sidewalk.
No, and my mom's a perfect example. She lives in a house just like this. She is single, she has not a lot of need for a lot of space, she doesn't want a yard, and she doesn't have four cars. The market that they're after is the baby boomer generation whose kids are out of the house, so there aren't four cars.
Okay, well...
David?
Three months?
Pardon?
Three months.
Which would be...
Oh.
April, May, June, something?
12th.
June 12th?
June 12th.
June 12th.
When we get to that one, we announce the date.
Okay. Do we have a second? We have a motion and second to continue item 4 until June 12. Cast your votes.
Thank you.
Item 5 is DA 23976 by Darlene Pointer for a lot deed approval, lot split deed approval
We're here again from last month.
Need your name and address for the record?
I'm sorry.
That's right.
My name is Kurt Pointer.
Okay.
About wife's Darlene Pointer at 12401 Roberts Road.
Okay.
Edmond, Oklahoma. We were going to split the property three times, first time we came down, and we've just kind of, from the field of neighbors, they were okay with one house being built on it, two acres, but they were literally rejected of planting two down there. So we want to come back, and we got approval the first time we came down to talk to the city about splitting it for one lot split, because they said you have the rights to split it once. And then we, the guy that was buying it wanted to build two, so I said, well, we can try that and go down and see if we can split it three times, and it didn't work. So we want to go back with just the regular plan of splitting it once, and that way it don't cause a traffic problem. And it's already got a driveway to the property that's there, that is in the center of the property for the house to be built. It's already got a house pad and everything there, ready to go, but we just want to split it once and keep the neighbors happy.
Well, assuming none of your neighbors are here today as they were last time, so...
Oh. I think one of them...
You have to come to the microphone? If you'd just come over here and give us your name and address.
Claude Woody is my name. I live in the area, but I own property across the road from this property here. The adjoining property owners do not object to a split whereby he will have two acres per lot. I represent all the property owners in the area. We simply don't want anything more dense than that.
So this application is not a problem today for you?
That's right.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, if there's no other protestors?
There are none. There's a variance.
Move the variance.
Second. We have a motion and second to approve the variance, which relates to street improvements, water, sewer, and drainage. I understand that.
Yes.
Okay. Cast your votes, and the variance is approved.
Move the application.
Second. The motion and second to approve item 5. Cast your votes, and you're approved. Thank you.
Thank you.
Item 6 and 7 are continued. Item 8 is SPOD-751 by Barbara Goodwin-Ole to rezone 8400 South Walker from R1 to SPOD-751.
Good afternoon. Alex Shafi, 12231 South May. I represent Ms. Goodwin-Ole and her family. Just to give you a brief kind of overview, I brought with me today Mohammed Khan, who is a civil engineer who helped us lay out the property, also Patricia Podalek, who's in my office, Carrie Brooks, who is with Fuller Miller Construction, who is a general contractor looking at this project, and Michael Hefner, I believe, and hopefully I mispronounced your name, Hoffner, I'm sorry, who is a civil engineer and did a traffic study for this project. Just a little bit of an overview, my client is a gal who lived in this house, grew up in this area, is a member of this community. She is somewhat new to property development. This will be her first project to develop, and this is her dad's former house, passed away several years ago. She wants to see this community prosper. She wants to see your neighbors do well and do, make a project that is good for the community, good for the neighborhood, good for what the city has plans and has planned for in the past. You know, the goal of this development is to improve the area around her to have a high, high use but low-impact situation where it goes along with the city's plan, and it goes with the neighborhood around it, but it doesn't impact the neighborhood. You know, a couple of things that we've done, we've met with Commissioner Ellers a couple of times and gotten feedback from him. We've met with the city, we've conducted a traffic study, we've laid out initial site plans, we have done some architectural renderings, we have done everything that we know that is best to do to try to get this property in the shape that it needs to be for this body to recommend approval. One of the challenges that we had, we have a few concerns that have come up. One of the things is the amount of traffic that's in a self-storage unit, and as you all very well know, self-storage units are very low-impact traffic-wise. In fact, we were just discussing, I believe, at peak hours, you're talking about four vehicles during the peak hour periods in the AM and the PM, which is, for a commercial development, that is extraordinarily low. And we have made some concessions in some, in our discussions with both the community, which we've had a community meeting with the neighborhood, and with Commissioner Ellers about some things that on the retail front or the office front, that fronts on Walker, the items that we will exclude and that are excluded from this SPOD, which include liquor stores and adult bookstores and other things that we don't think fit in the use of this One of the things that it's important here is, on, I believe, February 13, there was a conditional approval that the city put out that conditionally approved this or recommended conditional approval to this board. And then just two days ago, that conditional approval with no really visible change then went from the conditional approval to a recommended denial. And why that's important is, as hopefully you understand by the due diligence that we've taken, we would be happy and open to listening to suggestions and recommendations, and if we would have had an opportunity for a longer length of time, we would have undertook some more due diligence and understanding. So one of the things that's important is that we're, our folks are open and willing to entertain a discussion. I think that this property, as we, as you all know, is in an urban growth area. For the use that we're proposing, it is the lowest-impact use besides single-family homes or, well, arguably, single-family homes, because depending on the lot size and lot line, single-family homes could even be a larger or greater traffic impact than this proposal. All of that being said... All of that being said, uh, if, if, if any of my esteemed colleagues would like to talk about the aesthetics, the engineering, the traffic impact, um, you're welcome to, and if you have questions for them, we brought them, um, for that, and, and we hope that you, uh, approve this, uh, SPOD.
Mr. Shaw, let me ask, ask you a couple of questions. One of the first things you said was that this fits in with the city's plan, and if I'm understanding the comprehensive plan, uh, coming in beyond mid-block with something like this is in fact contrary to the master plan. Let me get my options. I mean, it either is or isn't, black and white. I mean, it's not a...
I think the answer is yes or no. I'm Mohammed Khan with SM Consulting, 815 West Main. The picture you have is really not a true representation of what these conditions on the ground are. These are not two separate tracks. According to the county assessor's office, it is all one track. The Harvey right-of-way does not go toward the south there.
So, Harvey's not improved down there?
No, no. The Harv- it's actually a T-intersection with 83rd and Harvey. The Harvey does not go toward the south, so the notion of a mid-block really is not a true representation on what the conditions are on the ground.
Is Harvey platted at this location?
I think we missed her. Yeah, he was referring to this document?
No, I'm asking staff.
It's old-platted, right-of-way.
And it's not been vacated?
It may be vacated at that point.
Okay, so we, we don't know?
We show, we still show it as right-of-way.
Okay.
What, what, I'm sorry. Before you... I didn't see the staff report two weeks ago. Did the recommendation change and why?
Uh, it was, it was actually deferred by the applicant before we completely reviewed it, so we just... This is the review that, that we completed.
So, this is your complete review as opposed to...
As, as opposed to them continuing it, uh, at the last meeting.
Todd?
Well, I, I have met with the applicant several times and, um, we've discussed numerous options. I'm not specifically opposed to this, uh, only because there is substantial, um, office, the church, which is zoned R1, I don't, I mean, that, that doesn't specifically, I think, apply. That's, it's a church.
It's not being used as residential.
That's exactly right.
I understand.
And so, I, I mean, it's, it's a tough... This is a tough one. Uh, I don't know that this mini-storage is not my favorite product, but I think as far as use and where it is and the fact that they've only got one entrance onto 83rd and one onto Walker, um, I mean, they, they're gonna have to invest substantial amount to build a bridge across, across this drainage, uh, flume that's there. Again, I'm not specifically against this, but I, as the staff recommendation, based on what I saw two weeks ago, and I'm, I can go back to as many times as this has been continued, never said, uh, denial, and so I'm a, I'm a bit troubled with that at this point. The applicant obviously knows about it and we did not have the opportunity to get together to, to discuss that before this meeting, but, uh, that does trouble me some today.
Where is the drainage flume that you refer to?
If you look, if you'll look on the map that is, uh, overhead, you can see that kind of from, from 83rd Street, south going...
Oh, runs diagonally through?
Yeah.
I- i- if I can jump in here and, and add a couple more comments that I think are really important, and I'll, and I'll let you, Mohammed, get in there. Um, one of the concerns we heard at the community meeting was that, um, the traffic on 83rd would increase significantly, and 83rd is not a, a street that, um, is built for heavy traffic and all these things, and, and that's why we conducted the traffic study and, and why we told you today that it is really an extraordinarily low-impact traffic-wise. The important thing about this development is on the 83rd Street side, where the ingress and egress would be, is not, um, perpendicular or doesn't go next to any residential. It actually goes next to, uh, an area that is already zoned O2. If you look just to the north, um, the lot just to the north of our property, it is zoned O2. Um, directly across the street is a very high-volume, or at least it used to be when I was growing up in this area, a very high-volume medical clinic, all along, um, Walker, or high-volume, um, residential, uh, excuse me, high off, uh, high-volume, uh, traffic areas, office, there's a hospital along this corridor, um, you go a, a mile over on Santa Fe, um, there are, um, areas, um, that are, um, mid-block, um, commercial, and, and, like I said, we, we have done everything, um, possible, um, to, to minimize the impact on an area that, um, uh, we could have asked for apartments, we could have asked for other things, um, and don't think it fits within this, what I think this area, uh, needs and is designed for, and that's, that's where we're at.
You're asking for C3, okay? And our, our staff report, the diagram, is, is limited from, um, just a few blocks. But you've pointed out the, the O2 to the north, the O2 across the street where the health clinic is, but where is, where is C3 along? I believe that's what the chairman was pointing out, that we're plopping some C3 right in the middle of something where there is no C3, so, uh, it's, there's, maybe this is a better question for staff. Is there C3 embedded in some of these PUDs up to the north, PUD 156, or down to the south, PUD 213?
No, this stretch of Walker Avenue's been held, uh, really to office use.
So, there is, where's, I guess my question is, where's closest C3? We're plopping this right in the middle of something where there is none.
At 89?
Down to 89. Thank you.
So, it's 89th and 74th. Is that right, Todd? Where the, uh, the hard, the commercial corners?
Which is the, the two-section line, hard commercial corner.
Right.
Correct.
And that is the, that is the important thing of why we're not asking this to be zoned C3. We're asking it, uh, to be in a SPOD, uh, and excluding, uh, significant uses, uh...
Well, you're excluding 1, 2, 3, 4, 5 uses.
Which leaves another 35 probably.
And including, I believe there's 48 uses in C3. You're excluding five of them?
If I may answer that question, uh, in the March 13 report, you will see that the staff is open to the idea of a C3 use at the corner of Walker and 83rd. So, the staff is open to the idea of a C3 use at 83rd and Walker. Now, we kind of stretching a little bit further with low-impact development, are proposing a self-storage unit, uh, which will be, which is a limited hour service, only seven to nine, and it will be secured by fencing, screening, and there will be a 24-hour man-guard at the side there. So, uh, I think indirectly, it may answer your question, you saying that there is no use of C3. Well, if we follow the staff recommendation, then the staff is open to the idea of a C3 right at the corner of Walker and 83rd Street.
Well, that's not something that I think the commission's go, gonna go along with, and of course, the staff recommendation is a recommendation to us to make a decision. Let me, let me finish. Also, as I look at this visually, uh, I could maybe buy into doing something like low-impact mini-storage on the western portion as I look at it.
Mm-hmm.
As I look to the east, crossing Harvey, I can't make myself comfortable with that. You've got R1 adjacent to it immediately to the east and immediately to the north, and that needs to remain residential. That's one...
If, if I may, uh, just a few blocks further north and west of Harv- uh, Walker, you will see a storage facility there which is rounded by, uh, residential area. Uh, the aerial map perhaps might, might show that information.
If, I'm, 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 maybe I didn't study this deeply enough, but I'm, I'm unclear as to where everything's supposed to sit on these two tracks, frankly. We haven't been shown that. That's, that's, so... We also have a fistful of protesters. I don't know if anybody's here. It's in your packet. All right? No one signed up? This is all me. Okay, thanks. Did you sign up? Oh, I'm sorry. Somebody handed me something. I didn't realize it was here. We will hear from a couple of protesters. Why don't you gentlemen let us hear from the protesters, and you'll have a chance to, uh, respond to their comments?
Thank you.
Mr. Walters? Is that right? Okay. Give us your name and address for the record.
Ron Walters, 8501 South Walker. I live a block south, directly across, uh, uh, the street from the project. I'm on the other side of this situation today. 83rd Street, that, that whole area down there is large residential tracks. Uh, it's been predominantly, uh, residential area for a lot of years, a lot of new houses, a lot of nice houses in there. 83rd Street is not an impressive street at all. I mean, it's basically two-lane asphalt. Uh, I'd have to look. I don't even think it's got curb and gutter. Walker has never, never, never succeeded any commercial property on it. The O2 that's on there is, is great. Uh, there's some houses along there, some churches along there. Uh, the C3 property that's on 89th and Walker has been a continual failure. Uh, they struggle to keep those properties full or anybody even in them. Uh, I don't necessarily have a problem with the mini-storage, uh, except on the front, but I'm pretty sure all of my neighbors that are wrapping around the back, like what y'all are seeing, have a real problem with that. But, um, that's on the comment side.
Thank you. Mr. Hawkins? Give us your name, please, and address.
I'm Wendell Hawkins from 229 Southwest 83rd Street.
Thank you.
I have a letter here from, uh, a dentist that I passed out to everybody.
We have it.
Do you want me to read it or...
Uh, you don't need, you don't need to read it. You can just tell us what your thoughts are or what his are.
Okay, uh, his thoughts is along the same line as mine.
Okay.
Except I have, uh, a few other things that, uh, is a, on top of that.
Tell us your concerns, please.
Okay, my concern is, actually, the property facing 83rd Street is approximately 900 feet. What faces Walker is only like about 160 feet. So, they're, they're gonna be fronting more to 83rd Street than they are Walker. The traffic that will be drawn up and down 83rd Street, they can claim whatever they want to, but, uh, just the churches, their increases of traffic up and down 83rd Street. Also, on the upkeep of the property, if they take care of the property, if this is approved and they take care of the property like they've taken care of the property now, over the last couple of years, Southwest Oklahoma City has a, and the neighborhood will have a big eyesore. Also, uh, the, I understand the church is in favor of this, but that's what they said in the community meeting, that they was in favor of it. If they do what they stated in that community meeting, they're planning on moving farther south. If this is approved into commercial, uh, property, that will increase their property value, and that's what they're looking at. The drawing that has been submitted by FMC is not even possible to do what their picture shows.
Okay, thank you.
That's, that's all I have. Any questions?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else signed up who wants to talk to us about this? Okay. Mr. Shaw?
Just to address a couple of things that I think are really important, um, whether, um, and I certainly think that this board has, uh, the ability to take into account whether something is a sustainable business, because you certainly don't want to approve something that, that doesn't last for very long and then becomes a vacant building, and that's a problem for everyone. But whether this buil- whether this business succeeds or not, I don't think is in front of this, this commission. You know, I, I think that, um, what this property, um, will do, um, because of how the city has gone, um, because of, um, frankly, the long-term planning, um, the, the 2020, uh, Matt, this is in an urban growth area, um, that there is, there is not going to be single-family homes developed here. I know that that's what the neighborhood wants. Um, they don't want any changes to occur, but that's not what's going to be in this property. The, the area of the city has moved, uh, further south and west residentially, um, and frankly, further east. But this area is not going to be, uh, redeveloped in a residential sense. Um, there've been a bunch of people that have looked at it in that front, and that the market just won't support it. The traffic, the traffic i- is the only other issue that I, that I hear about, a- and there's, the, the traffic is, is really not an issue because of, of the low-volume use, four vehicles at the peak, uh, time periods in the morning and four vehicles in the evening. You know, I, I, I hope that, I hope that we can, um, move this area forward and, and, um, you approve the, the application.
Don, now from back there, you can come up to the microphone if you want to. This is recorded, so if you talk from back there, no one will hear you. Give us your name and address.
Uh, my name is Chip Struthers. I live 128, uh, Southwest 83rd Street. First time ever doing this, I didn't know I had to sign in.
That's fine.
Okay. Um, here's what I hear is, uh, when I moved there, I have five kids that kind of come and go, um, their moms back and forth, and just Sunday alone, when church services on this side and this side, just Sunday alone, we tell them to stay back here and don't play out there, because there's traffic on there. So, peak hours for U-Hauls and all that stuff is gonna be what, Saturday and Sunday when you're not working, when you got your kids out of school wanting to play out in your yards. We all know it's not safe. We can't send them to 7:00, like we could when we were kids, so all we have is our front yard, our backyard, and I know sometimes people stay in storages because they don't have no money for houses and stuff like that, and we're on the south side. And another thing is, what I hear them say is, you know, it's part of the planning to, you know, storage units and stuff, within a mile, we have two storage units that aren't even half, not even full. You can call them right now, and they got storages to rent out and stuff, so if those were full, I could see, hey, we need some more, the community needs this, or we need to, but we got two on each side of this within a mile that you can go rent a box out there right now if you want to, so. Thank you. Thank you.
Commissioners?
Mr. Chairman, I, I cannot support this application. Um, I, I might be able to support, um, well, no, I won't even say that. I mean, what needs to develop on this property is, is office development. It's consistent with the area. I don't hear the neighbors saying they don't want anything there or all they want's residential. What I read in these letters is that they want something that's consistent with the area around it. This is not. I don't think it's appropriate for there to be retail in this area. I don't think it'd be appropriate for it to front onto 83rd Street. I don't think that the, that the storage is appropriate. Um, I, I'm not in support of this application at all, and I would move to deny it.
And it doesn't conform with the plan?
No, it does not. It's just not consistent with the area.
The introduction of retail this far down between those section lines is not in conformance. It's not a problem.
is not appropriate.
Any other discussion? It's been seconded. Any other discussion? Motion for denial? Cast your votes. It is denied.
I'm Janice.
Items nine and 10 were continued. Item 11 is SPOD 753 by Aaron Worley to rezone 1411 Southeast 19th Street from R1 and AE2 overlay to SPOD 753.
Good afternoon. I'm Aaron Worley, 3910 West Wilshire Boulevard, Oklahoma City. I'm representing Juan Quidros and his request for a spud in this property.
Commissioners, no one signed up? James?
I was looking at, I was looking at it, and I was concerned about how, how far it was expanding back into the property, into R1, kind of the same issues, but I think it's a little bit different.
I do have that concern about this as well. I mean, it, it says it's an expansion. It's being done to allow the expansion of existing light industrial business, but the uses that are being permitted, eating establishments, fast food, retail sales and services, I, I don't see that those are really appropriate for this area. I, I have some concerns about the depth of it.
Well, that was going, my question in a different manner. Our staff report indicates this is expansion of existing businesses. Then we list all these things. Tell us what is in spud 399 and 728 right now, in front of it?
720, this, basically, I resubmitted, and my, I just had the spud approved two months ago, or three months ago, and he was, he's putting in an office slash garage is what, and I've even got it permitted right now. And it's a little bit too big for the property, and he needed, he needed more parking, so that's, he bought this, the property next to it in hopes of being able to get his.
Okay. Now, with that in connection with what Commissioner Powers just said, how is this an extension of that business? When, when, when we look at this litany of, of things, including, you know, fast food places in the middle of a block?
I understand that. I'd be happy to take that off the list.
Well, you know, maybe you might consider continuing it and, and tweaking it a little bit. I don't really have a, a problem. The R1 immediately to the east of it is vacant. I don't have a, a problem with, with something going in here. But as, as Commissioner Powers pointed out, it's inconsistent with what we see there now and with what our staff report is saying, and I just really think you might need to tweak it a little bit.
Okay. Like I said, I just, I, I basically replicated the one we just submitted to the west of there that got approved, and, and nothing was said about it, so we didn't bother.
It has all these uses in the one that was, the, what was, what was approved to the east, east of it?
The west.
To the west?
Yes, sir.
You'd have all these same type of uses in it?
Exactly. It, I, I just basically changed the address and resubmitted it to, to, for the same uses. Didn't.
We were sleeping till we go.
Yeah, well, but the deal is, if you look at 728, north and south, it lines up with SPOD 604 to the, to the north. This is going back down to the residential on the north.
Right.
And, and that's the big, I think, the big difference that I see.
Well, the spud 604 splits the property pretty much. And then there's R1 to the, to the right, which is a vacant lot right now. So we're, I mean, my, 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 the guy that I work for would actually like to buy the rest of it, but it hasn't been able to get a hold of it.
So your plan is to kind of continue this office warehouse from Service Road back to Jordan all the way?
Um, if possible, that'd be great, but like I said, it's not.
You can't get there yet. I, I get that.
Yeah.
But.
But it's already, I mean, most of it's already.
But I don't think you want a fast-food restaurant in the middle of, in the middle of that block. Yeah, that's, that's, those, those uses are not consistent with what we think you want to do.
I, I completely agree with you.
There's about three of those. If, if we got rid of those, I'm pretty well on board. I mean.
I'm more than okay with it. Like I said, I just basically copied the previous one and resubmitted it.
We must have been asleep at the wheel around that.
Well, it was a little to the west.
Well, wait a minute. Do we need this to come back, or can we just get rid of these three uses?
I think we can get rid of the three uses, and then.
And move it along. That way we don't.
Hopefully, we and the staff will screen these better next time when it comes to something in the middle of the block.
Eating establishment, sit-down, eating establishment, fast food, participant recreation and entertainment. Those are the three. Is that right?
Retail services general?
Retail services general. Does he need that to operate the office warehouse type?
I would just keep it close to what he's using it for now. So anything that's not in line with what you're using it for now, I'd like to just eliminate that.
Can we leave the retail? I don't know exactly what he's going to do with it.
Right.
Okay. Where are we?
We are going to move through with the application.
Deleting.
With the deletion of eating establishment, sit-down, alcohol not permitted, eating establishment, fast food, participant recreation and entertainment indoor, and retail sales and services general.
Okay, I'm good with that.
I'm good with it.
Thank you.
Are you okay with that?
Uh, well, I was wondering if we could leave the, what, the retail part of it? Is that possible?
Not if you want my vote.
Well, but I, is the retail incidental to any of the uses that you're going to have? I mean, I don't, I don't want to limit.
Well, if it's an incidental use, you probably don't need to have the category. Yeah. People aren't going to the middle of the block for obscure retail use.
Some of these uses would come with incidental retail.
Okay.
But I don't know that he would, I don't know that he would have to have a standalone retail.
Okay.
Okay. Good. That's fine.
I'm good with that.
Okay.
Thank you.
So is there a motion?
Yes, there is.
Okay, is there a second? Great. I have a motion and a second to approve item 11 as conditioned deleting the four uses. Cast your votes. That's approved. Thank you.
Thank you, folks.
Item number 12 is ABC 802 by Tommy Bird Restaurant Group for an ABC overlay for the PUD 699 district located at 5516 West Memorial Road.
Hi. I'm Tommy Bird, 15200 Stony Spring Road, Edmond.
No one has signed up. Motion?
We'll try to keep this rolling.
Moving along?
This is for a new or another, to replace the old Tommy's Restaurant on Memorial Road. It's going to be a great addition, and I'd move approval.
Second, because I liked your restaurant at North Park Mall.
Yes.
You did real good.
Well, it's coming back. Hope you like it again.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve item 12. Cast your votes. And you're approved. Just tell us when you open. Hopefully for first of May. Thank you all.
And don't, don't forget the heart attack on the plate.
Item number 13 is C6580, the final plat of OCCHD Health and Wellness Campus Phase Two, located west of Interstate 35 and south of northeast 63rd Street.
Good afternoon. Mark Grubbs on Bath and Africa, 1819 South Morgan Road. We would like to withdraw the request for variance on item number three, and have worked with staff and agreed to extend sewer to the limits of the plat, so just ask for your approval. We agree to the T's.
Okay. Commissioner, no one signed up?
I move approval of the application with that modification to the variance, eliminating the variance.
Okay. We have two seconds. So motion to approve item 13. Cast your votes. That's approved. Thank you.
Last item for today is item 15, C6582, the final plat of Windchase Edition, Section Four, located south of northwest 164th Street and west of MacArthur Boulevard.
Skipped over 14. 14 we have.
Oh, I, I approved that on my agenda.
You did?
Sorry. Okay.
Kendall says great.
Sorry. Erase. Item 14 is C6581, final plat of the Falls of Portland, south of northwest 164th Street, east of Portland Avenue.
Good afternoon. Steve Rollins, Arc Engineering Consultants, 150 Deer Creek Road, representing the applicant. We are good with the, all the T's. We ask for variance to TE number three, and if there are any other questions, we'd be happy to answer them.
No one signed up, but Anir just walked in. Is there?
And can you, while he's coming up, can you explain the need or, or why you need the variance for the slight distance?
There's only 80 feet in that area right there, so there's just not enough room to provide the site triangles, and we don't own the property to the south of us. There's only 33 feet of right-of-way there.
Okay.
Existing.
One of the things in the plat, detention is required in this area because we have concern of downstream flooding of structures. I had, staff had talked to Steve about this, and we want to make sure that that requirement is added.
We're in agreement with that. We will provide detention.
Does that need to be a TE?
Yes.
All right. Well, TE number seven, detention required then. And the applicant agrees. Good. Any other discussion, commissioners? No one has signed up?
Move variance.
Second. Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the variance to TE three. Cast your votes. That's approved.
Move the application with the addition of TE for.
Second. Motion to approve item 14. Cast your votes. And that's approved. Thank you.
Now Kendall, item 15, C6582, Windchase Edition, Northwest 164th and MacArthur.
Good afternoon. Kendall Dillon, for the record. This is the last dis, or final plat of the Windchase development. There's two T's that are standard. We agree with those, and we'll ask for your approval.
No one signed up, commissioners?
Move approval.
A motion and a second to approve item 15. Cast your votes. And you're approved. Wish you to put all those first. That concludes the public hearings. Planning Commission committees, Planning Commission members, Planning Department.
Just wanted to mention that we've been holding several public meetings. We talked about it the last Planning Commission meeting for Plan OKC workshops, and we have decided to extend that. We'll be organizing several more in different locations, different times around the city. It'll be posted at www.planokc.org, so we hope that all of you will have an opportunity to come out and see the process and invite the public to participate.
And I would encourage you to do that. I've done it once or twice, maybe once. But you all need to be aware of what's occurring in the plan development process. Municipal counselor?
I've got a couple of things while you're here, Dan. We circulated Dan's analysis of the statutory obligations and so forth for the Planning Commission. You all would have gotten that. And while Dan's here, anyone have any questions about what they've read, our responsibilities or our statutory authority? I was not aware of every last little bit of it, and I didn't think all of us were totally aware of every last little bit of it, so I asked Dan to do that memo and share the statute with you, and an opportunity for either any comments or questions, or obviously talk to Dan anytime later on.
I appreciate the memo. I'd like to, I haven't had a chance to read it fully, but I do appreciate the effort. These things are not easy to generate, so thank you.
Pleasure.
Couple other thoughts. Another thing that I mentioned to a couple of Planning Commissioners and talked to Dan about is the current situation with the subdivision regulations in common areas. When we adopted the subdivision regulation, I think we thought the spirit was that the amenities would be reasonably accessible, located in an area of development where people could actually go and use them, and a lot of what we've seen lately, particularly, we're getting common areas coming in, and little tiny shreds of land or shards of land where nothing can, nothing else can be done with it anyway, and they're counting that toward the common area requirement, and in some cases, locating amenities at one extreme end of a development or another, or along an entrance near a section-lined road, where I at least wouldn't send my children to go and play, even if that's where the amenities were located. So I've asked Dan if we might come up with some policy language that we could share with the development community, not specifying precisely where common areas need to be, but just generally how they ought to be accessible so that they can be used for the purpose for which they were intended, and be functional. And that policy might be in place until we have the new master plan, so I'll ask Aubrey to look at that language, too, and see if it is in line with where she thinks the plan development is going with respect to common areas and residential subdivisions. So I wanted to let you know I've done that.
I'll have, I'll have Drafway next week.
Okay, great. And request from me to staff, when we get staff, staff reports and we're looking at zoning requests or P, or, or PUDs, but particularly PUDs, could, could we have a listing of the uses units permitted and those that are being excluded? I think that would help us look, I mean, it would help me understand what particularly is not being included when somebody gives me a long list, and then I'm wondering, well, what, what isn't there? I don't think there's a lot more involved to give us that additional bit of information.
You want the laundry list and the strike-through?
Yes. You can just strike them through. I mean, it can be one, I mean, I don't.
I get it.
I don't care how it's presented. I would just like to have that information. I see some nods around the horseshoes, so if we could do that, we would appreciate it. And anyone else have anything?
About, about Dan's memo, and I really thank you a lot, Dan, for that work. It was really well done. And, and in looking at it, just to make sure that everybody on this commission understands, we have sole authority over the content of the comprehensive plan.
That's my copy.
Period. And so therefore, whatever your involvement will be in these meetings that are going on, and, you know, the development of ideas, et cetera, this is going to come to us, and it's going to be our plan. So I really encourage you to figure it out, because this is just presented to council. Here it is. You know, and, and it becomes the standard for the city for the next 15 years, or however long it is. And, and thanks to Dan, he's made that very clear, what our responsibilities are. And I wasn't aware when I came on the commission that we had that responsibility at all. I thought we were just going to do zoning stuff and go on, but, but it's a lot bigger than that, and it's important, so.
Well, and it ties into our review of the CIP plan and so forth, because.
Yes.
That's actually supposed to tie in to the master plan.
Yeah.
Very specifically, rather than just a bunch of projects being selected around the city and just put into a bond issue. So there's more to it than we thought when we were asked to do this job.
Yep. And I was able to attend the last meeting of the Citizens Advisory Team. Bob was there, others, and if you, I've been bad about attendance because of some travel concern, but it's an encouraging process. I just have to say, it's been very, it's been very informative to me to get different views, hear different people, and actually to also see citizen participation. It's been impressive.
There's a lot of on-the-job training here.
Yep. Yep.
Okay. Well, we're adjourned, folks. Nick, you want to stay and talk to Dan for a few minutes? Let's talk about.